For the evening, I'd like to call to order the October 20th work session of the Paco San Planning Commission. We have a couple of, well, one presentation this evening. Thomas Canelo is going to start that along with Mr. Wally Horton completing that. Thomas, you have the spotlight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and citizens watching from home and here. This is extremely similar, the front half of this presentation, to what you all have seen previously. So I'm going to try to be mindful of your time so we can talk about the back half in more length than stuff we've already covered. But this is to start the discussion on comprehensive plan revision or amendment concerning the north side of Victory Boulevard. This is the city's current zoning map, and this is the north side that we are discussing this evening as part of the comprehensive plan amendment. But just the three districts here outlined, the single-family residential district, the research and development district that fronts Victory, and the general commercial district that has some frontage on Victory as well. This is that same area of focus, and here's the breakdown of how many parcels in the overall acreage are comprised of each zoning district. This is the research and development district in blue. We'll probably come back to a few of these images later in the work session. The current language in the comprehensive plan, that will certainly be part of the overall discussion. But the permitted uses and prohibited uses listed here that you've seen in previous meetings. I do want to take just a second and pause at the general commercial district. The comprehensive plan language is the same that you all have seen in the presentation before. However, this is the most recent and up-to-date permitted and prohibited uses of the general commercial district. This is language that City Council passed that you all recommended to them for their approval at the end of last year. And just for folks at home, the city code, as you know well, Madam Chair, the online version is not as updated. I'll say live as soon as Council passes things. But there is a tab there to see amended language if there is some. This is the amended language I neglected to include in the presentation previously. But this is it. It remains largely unchanged for the language that has existed for some time, but includes some updates that you all in City Council approved last year. This is the B2 district language, B1 language that you're all very familiar with, and this, of course, being the R1 single-family residential property on the north end of the map pertinent to tonight's section, and of course, the code language that speaks to the central planning districts which covers that R1 section. This is the future land use map as currently exists in the comprehensive plan, and this really starts tonight's discussion that Wally's going to cover. So any questions you may have as we go along, him or I are happy to take them, and look forward to a good discussion.
Okay, I am going to start with the future land use map, and I'm going to use my pointer here. We've really got three different areas here, as Thomas illustrated very well on the zoning. But you've got the low-density residential, you've got the research and development, and the general commercial. We basically start with an overall view of the Big Woods North generally. A lot of this stuff was summed up very nicely in Thomas's presentation, which I know y'all have seen quite a bit of, but it is 210 acres, more or less. There's 97 in the R1, and there's about 113 in the commercial along Victory Boulevard. The, when you talk about, and I will kind of move ahead here just a little bit, yeah, when you talk about some of the impediments to R1 back here, the low-density residential, you've got, first of all, you've got very limited street access. You've got access maybe here, I think up there, Thomas's zoning map shows it better, and then you've got Oakmore up there. I pointed at the wrong place. It's Oakmore right there. Impediments to creating access off Victory Boulevard, of course, are made more challenging by the fact that there's commercial zoning along Victory Boulevard. And I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go along. But in general, commercial and R and D typically has been marketed for, used to be marketed for plan unit development mixed use, but of course, we got rid of the plan unit development mixed use on April 14th. The City Council eliminated that from zoning ordinance. But it's been marketed for light industrial office use in the R and D, which is the blue, and in the purple, general commercial, commercial retail business. As Thomas pointed out, a lot of the uses in B2 are allowed NGC, albeit with conditional use permits for a lot of it. But the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, if you want to do anything other than the permitted uses in these two commercial districts, you might be looking at a conditional use for even a rezoning. Now, obviously, we don't have anything before us right now, but, I mean, I'm just talking in terms of what might happen in the future. So that's sort of the general overview. When you get down what used to be called Big Woods East, and Ms. Canelo shows it with how tough it's strike-throughs through it, but we are proposing, and this is pursuant to Planet Commission's direction, when they asked for a Big Woods North commercial and Big Woods North residential. So we're trying to do that here. Now, there are some, there is some language in Big Woods East that is carried forth into the proposed new language, you know, particularly, you know, stuff about eliminating strip development or not advocating strip development, looking for controlled access off of Victory Boulevard. The plan, it envisions, as of now, proposed company is the plan language, to basically run the general commercial designation all the way to the York County line. Pretty much, pretty much self-explanatory. There will be architectural standards will apply for this zone, and of course, as Ms. Canelo mentioned, we've done some tweaking in our zoning ordinance that has required a greater amount of buffer and more landscaping in that particular area. So that's basically the first part of general commercial. If I can continue on, unfortunately, I couldn't get on this slide, not even close. As I sort of intimated before, significant infrastructure improvements will be necessary for the comprehensive development of the area, and we have got some language in there that, and this is really borrowed from Big Woods East. Efforts should be made to restrict strip-type development that will prohibit future development. In other words, you want to make the whole area viable with any sort of street going in there. You don't want to create problems down the road for being able to develop other properties. And as we have said, and this is from the, sort of the memo that I put out the last two months, and again this month, is that we envision a comprehensive master plan type development here. Now, obviously, this is a long time, well, I won't say a long time, but it's significantly in the future because it's going to take work on the part of the city, on the Economic Development Authority, and of course, by the private property owners that own property in this area. So we're, we're set the stage for that. It may or may not ever happen, but we're set the stage for it. The Economic Development Authority, of course, owns some properties in this area as well, and some is basically across from City Hall Avenue. I thought I had more maps in here, but I guess not. I meant to construct controlled street access along Victory Boulevard. Traffic flow is a big concern, obviously, with the fact that Victory Boulevard is not going to be widened in the future. So it, you know, we are developing, and I'll get to it a little bit later, but we are proposing that there only be three potential accesses, one at Big Woods Drive, one at the City Hall Avenue, and one at Legacy Boulevard. And, and I've already talked about plant screening and earth and berms, architectural control guidelines. The Big Woods West is where our R and D here is, is where our R and D area is. Formerly Big Woods West, now it's part of, you know, Big Woods North Commercial. We are proposing to eliminate this designation and extend general commercial all the way again to take up the, take up the R and D area, which I think is pretty much at the county line, so. Okay, I think of, yeah, so, I mean, that's really all I said for Big Woods West. We get rid of Big Woods West, and we say that, you know, this plan envisions extending general commercial, as I said, to the county line. Okay, so now we talk about the residential, been a lot of talk about the residential. We know that there's not going to be any plan unit development or any mass subdivision in this area. This is the base zoning district, 20,000 square foot lots, 100 foot of frontage, 50 feet off of a road, and 1,800 square foot houses. So the base zoning layer, and it is the largest area of undeveloped R1 property in the city in this particular area, which I think Ms. Canelo showed you an aerial of all the woods. It is truly the big woods. As discussed earlier in the general discussion that we had in Chapter Four, creation of new public streets may be necessary to develop these parcels, and some of those might be going through general commercial or research, well, general commercial land, let's just... Now, some of these lots, we know contain non-tidal wetlands and have floodplain issues. We don't know the exact limits of that because we don't have any reason delineation that we can sort of point to and say, well, this is it. I can tell the commission and anybody listening, whether they're here or at home, that we've had several inquiries about extensions on the Oakmore, and in each case, and I've been here since 2017, but in each case, they have refrained from any further development there because of the environmental factors. And one thing I didn't mention is stormwater management facilities. One thing that we would look at with any development plan is not only the non-tidal and not only the floodplain, but we would also look at the stormwater management detention. And we can do all that at staff level. We've got the personnel here to, we've got an engineer, we've got public works, we've got utilities, and of course, we have planning and zoning. So, you know, really, when it, when it boils down to it, the only real significant change that we're making here is to extend general commercial over the research and development designation in the comprehensive plan. Everything else is pretty much staying the same, same. The R1 land has been available for development for decades, and I mean, this is what we have. I could say the same thing for the general commercial, but, you know, some of that is, it's going to be discussed at City Council level, and I'm sure that when y'all get to a work session, there'll be more discussion about that, too. So anyway, we've got old delineations, we would need new delineations. We would need new delineations for any type of development there. As far as wetlands, and of course, you know, we want to know about the floodplain and, and all the other factors, stormwater management. Traffic in R1 zoning properties, we would prefer, prefer that it come off of Yorktown Road or even Oakmore Drive as, you know, as, as, as doubtful as that may be because of the environmental factors. But, so that's why we have this, any traffic in R1 zoning property for by right development. We're talking about by right development here. And according with all zoning district regulations, should be off Yorktown Road and Oakmore Drive. And should be focused on areas where existing frontage is available or can be acquired for a new street and require a traffic impact analysis. For example, let's say somebody's got 35 feet off of Yorktown, and they can acquire an extra 15 feet to, to give them, you know, 50 foot to put a road in there. You know, that might be a possibility. I mean, you know. In cases where R1 zoning properties are landlocked or where no access exists or can be created, access via a public street off Victory Boulevard should be, first of all, in the ownership of the developer at the time of application, be limited to the public street, be focused towards existing intersections. And I pointed this out earlier, but City Hall Avenue, Legacy Boulevard, and Big Woods Drive, or as the planning commission sees fit, and require a traffic impact analysis review. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you already that a traffic impact analysis is required for anything coming off Victory Road. What we're trying to do is just make it clear for the sake of clarity in the comprehensive plan. There is not a traffic impact analysis required for Yorktown Road or Oakmore, but this plan thinks there should be. And again, that's our short area. I didn't have this on my PowerPoint, but, but really, the next step is from this point is, you know, we're here before the planning commission tonight to give our draft of the proposed comprehensive plans, draft language. And there are a few redundancies in there that we might be able to clear up a little bit. But basically, it's in pretty good shape in, in terms of what the planning commission has recommended. But if the planning commission feels like we need another meeting in November or, you know, when the schedule allows, we can do that. Otherwise, we will go to a joint work session with the city council at a date that'll have to be decided, I guess, at this point. And then the next step from there will be a public hearing before the planning commission, and then a public hearing before the board of the city council. Almost said board supervisor, city council. I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Can you clear up exactly what, properties landlocked, like for housing on the residential side?
Yes.
What exactly would have to happen for them to get a road built, you know, to their property? How would they get out of, how would they make use of their property?
Well.
I understand that there's environmental stuff and all that, but I mean.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we shouldn't be in the business of landlocking people. But, but there is obviously some land here doesn't have a very good access. And that's why we're allowing for access potentially off Victory if the property's owned in the developer's name and, and we get a traffic impact analysis and it's coming off the designated.
They'd have them theirs and the property on Victory.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You'd say that, you know, they've built it off Victory, or access road, but it has to be, talking about a property that's, a person only owns something inside the residential. They don't own anything on Victory. What do they, I mean, they just?
Well, I mean, they would, I mean, obviously, you can't, we wouldn't expect them to build a road across people's property unless those people were, you know, agreeable to it. I understand they may not want to buy the property until they know that a road's going to be approved. But there's a thing, you know, you could do a contingency purchase. Yeah, contingent on this being approved. So that's what we'd be looking at.
A lot to go through, so, okay, yeah. Which is probably why it's not developed.
Expand on that, Wally. Is there a slide that's available that actually shows the individual parcels that we could all look at?
Yes, there is.
I've seen that, and I think folks will see that without some sort of master, and the prospect of this ever being anything is very slim.
Forgive me, but I'm going back to one of the earlier slides here.
Yeah, thank you.
This is the, this is the.
This is here, so you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight properties back here.
Some of these properties are owned by, you know, some of these properties, they're mostly disparate owned, but I understand that there may be some groups of properties that are under, ultimately under the control of one entity.
So for this to happen, I mean, a lot of folks are going to have to come together and, and share the access and infrastructure and utility, environmental delineation done to see what can be developed and possibly new lot lines sold or developed and, or any of this can really become any kind of a viable development.
Yes, sir. That, that's true. And that's why I think for decades, you've seen this property basically.
Right, exactly.
You know, sit valid. I mean, because we're not doing anything different now than, than what we've done in the past.
We're just, you know, I don't know that any of us have any real issue with the changes that, that we've proposed. Hang on this for another month, but nothing's going to really change. So I don't know what my fellow commissioners do.
I, my big concern is still traffic. I understand that you're saying that Victory Boulevard is widened, but I don't see any scenario where you can develop that out, general commercial, and leave that two lanes and not cause gridlock on that road. I don't think that's possible.
Well, it's, it's going to be difficult. I would say this, that if you are able to put another street off of Victory to go back into one of these areas, you make the traffic situations a little better. Ultimately, yes, they're coming out on Victory. But, you know, like I said, with those three intersections we talked about, there'll have to be a traffic impact assessment. And it may be that the outcome of the traffic impact assessment is that, you know, the developer needs to make some improvements to make that work.
Correct, like with VDOT, if it was a VDOT type of situation, VDOT would be able to say whether or not this would meet the traffic impact in that area. So it wouldn't be compatible.
Right.
Addable or not.
I mean, if it doesn't meet the traffic impact, we're going to have a.
That's, yes.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have a problem.
Right.
So is what that's saying, Wally, is if a development large enough that would, that the traffic impact study dictates Victory Boulevard be widened, would that be something the developer would have to put the bill on? Or how do we have that kind of light which would make that happen?
Yeah, I don't think the city would put, put the bill. I don't want to talk for city council. But, yeah, basically, that's what you would be talking about.
Developer would be responsible for widening Victory Boulevard?
Yes.
I don't believe that's true.
Okay.
You cannot compel a developer to dedicate for public purposes for something he didn't create. He's only doing 10% of the traffic on Victory Boulevard. You can't make him widen.
Well, yeah.
That's not going to be, that's not going to be feasible. Now, you can make him build his own road to service property.
That, that's what I was talking about.
Make you have 50 feet, make you have curb gutter and all that. But you're not going to require a developer to widen Victory Boulevard. Only the Compost of Virginia is going to do that.
At what point would development cease in the Big Woods because of an issue with traffic, or what, what would happen? They, they, the traffic study indicates that, you know, something happens after that, so.
Wouldn't that be two separate things? I, I mean, what we're talking about is an area that's currently already zoned residential. A developer, should they want to right the second, come in and build houses on that, they can. But they haven't because they don't have the access to the property. It's something that exists currently. We haven't seen it developed. It's been like that. When I spoke with both of you all for generations, a long period of time.
Very dependent on Hampton and Yorktown, still. No matter what, if we did it tomorrow and made our, you know, extended, ran out here four lanes, boom, Carrie's Chapel and Running Man, that's where the real traffic, let's just say it. That's where it gets us, and we don't, I mean, that's outside. I mean, it's, I write it every morning, I write it, and come back at night at the worst times, and everything's fine until you hit there, and then it's not fine, you know? And some days are better than others, or worse than others, however you want to look at it. But we keep talking, and I think it's great that we're talking about the north side and all that. But of course, we have to consider what's already been built there. We've added 2,000 people on the south side. So it really limits, it's taken away to me, a lot of the opportunities on what you can do to this north side that we're looking at right now. That really needs to be considered, because I mean.
Sure.
It's, that's about what, 10, 50% of the people we just added right in one location. You know, so it's, it's tough. It's going to be, and again, of course, if it was easy to build here, it would already have been done years ago. There's a lot of things in the way, it would take a lot, I mean, a lot of people cooperating, a lot of people selling the property, and then getting underneath one, which.
Sure.
Not saying it's impossible, I mean, it happened on the, with Legacy, but.
Well, it is, yes.
So, but I mean, this is, there's a lot of challenges with this.
And Mr. Yeager, you and I, I'm not sure who else, spoke to a gentleman who owns property in this area, who was quite concerned of us telling him he could not develop his property, you know, should he so choose? So by essentially, and it was a good conversation, we had a nice long conversation about that. And his concern was just that, you know, he should be able, should he desire to do the improvements, that he can do that. But by doing so, on some of this area that's currently zoned separately from research and development, their property owners, they should be able to, he wanted to make sure that we had that point across was, it's my property. If I want to develop it, you shouldn't tell me not to.
Right.
And I've been saying that from the beginning. It's, it does, it is weird. I mean, if I owned this property, and then, you know, we're all talking about what y'all think I should do with my property, I mean, that's, that's weird, you know, right? Because I'm not being considered, but at the same time, you know, I can totally understand where they're coming from. I mean, they're paying taxes on it for years, or, you know, the response, insurance, everything on that. And then, you know, yeah, I mean, I absolutely see where they're coming from. And that's why I've been.
Right. Well, I will say this, there's nothing in zoning ordinance or certainly in the comprehensive plan that's going to prevent development on any of these properties.
That's right.
But we have put into work or in place, you know, the high density, the legacy and all that. So that hasn't done.
Right.
So they can't just build anything. We've taken away a lot of their.
Well, it's by right uses. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that anything that we would pass would probably fall back on by right uses as well.
The PUD, I mean, it was been eliminated.
Right.
And then even, I didn't include it in the slide because it didn't cover the general commercial as a whole, but the, in the permitted and prohibited uses of the general commercial, we got specific. You all will remember about the EDA parcels, and it, it prohibits in the code multifamily or townhomes or single family, and those parcels at least being developed in pieces. You know, that's a very small chunk of that north side. But at least for, you know, the EDA and parts there, the mixed use language has been eliminated. So.
Larger spacing, no, they can't, you know, that's also counted as well.
Well, the open space code you all made much more restrictive in the sense that the lot size requirements are larger, the setbacks are larger, the amount of usable space of non-titled wetlands is less.
Yeah, the open space categories are different.
So, you know, there's not a parcel over there that prohibits by right. And I'm talking about the parcels, you know, in that little shark fin, the R1, the GC, the R and D. There's not one over there that permits by right multifamily housing or high dense, high density housing.
Right.
It doesn't exist, and that's not part of the contemplated amendments.
And there's no housing at all on Victory right now, of the two? You'd have to.
No, I mean, you.
Not on the north side.
That's, right.
And again, what we're looking at is not changing the zoning. We're not approving anything. It's this plan right here, this plan, that can be amended, that's good until, well, 2038 that we look at every five years, that we can change sooner if necessary. It's just a plan, it's just a guideline. So the planners look at it and they say, yes, this checks out, it makes sense.
It is a guideline, and we will, which segue you said, and one thing that I wanted to say, we will, after this process is done, we'll be looking at the, the central business district in, in similar fashion. After that, we're going to probably spend about a year or two revising the entire comprehensive plan. Because what's going to happen is that when we put in Victory North, and we put in the, the central business area, it's going to create a lot of loose ends. We're going to need to go through the entire code and make sure it all reads and it all hooks up the way it should. But our direction right now is to work on Victory North.
And when did we look at this, was it last year, year before last? The comprehensive plan? We approved it again for five years?
Yeah, I think we, well, we can, we can do sooner than five years.
We can, yes.
But I think it was 2023, I believe.
23, and it was because Legacy was still being, you know, built out, but.
We decided that we wanted that to finish before we, you know.
And I, I thought, I think that what's really interesting, and one of the things when all of us met, was exactly that stuff can be built right on this property right now.
Yes.
I would just like to add, the focus really tonight for the work session has been kind of the discussion on amendments related to the comprehensive plan, specifically to the north side. So with that in mind, I do like looking at, you know, referring it to Big Woods North Residential, North Commercial. And the language that is being proposed here. It's good, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of that. So with that in mind, I see progress being made in relation to where we're heading.
I agree. I was gonna make the same comment, but find the language adequate.
I agree. I, I think seeing the language in front of you is very helpful.
I'm in agreement with the language also.
Okay. I just wanted to capture that for posterity. All right, well, thank you. I guess we're gonna stand in recess if there are no further comments for 10 minutes until seven o'clock.
Sounds good.
Thank you. October 20th, meeting of the PCOsen Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Armentraut?
Present.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Present.
Commissioner Hartley?
Present.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Present.
Chairwoman Shaw?
Present.
A quorum has been established. Thank you. If you are able, please rise for the invocation following the Bledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. As we begin this meeting, may we work together with respect, understanding, and a spirit of cooperation. Help us to listen carefully, speak thoughtfully, make decisions that unite us, and move our city forward in a positive way. May all we do tonight serve the best interest of our community and those that we are privileged to represent. Amen. Mr. Jaeger?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we begin tonight, we are moving to item number C, the approval of minutes, and these are the minutes from September 15th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from September 15th to 25.
Second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Armentraut?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shaw?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. We are gonna now move to our audience for visitors, and this is a time when the audience can come and speak with, or speak to us. This is not a question-and-answer portion. We will ask staff, and I had spoken to staff earlier, that if you do have questions, please feel free to ask them, and staff will do their best during their presentation to answer that. But this is your time to speak to us as the Planning Commission this evening. So I wanna make sure that we give you the opportunity to speak with us and, you know, get your comments through. So as we begin this evening, we're gonna start off with Mr. Harold Quinn. You're our first speaker.
My name is Harold Quinn, owner of Oakmore Drive in PCOsen, Virginia. One thing I'd like to start with is in the work session, there was a question related to who owns property within what you call Victory North. They specified that there are 97 acres in the R1 area. I want you to be aware that there are three entities that own 92.18 of that area right now. One entity owns 55.66 acres, has two exits that he can use to get to Yorktown Road. The other one is a 15.1. That is right behind the 55.66. He has no capability of getting there, but he could sell his property to the first entity, and you would have roughly 94, not 84 acres, or 74 acres established. The third one owns 21.42, and he has a natural entrance also to Yorktown Road. I'd like to first thank Wally Horton, Thomas Cannella, and Seem Crawford. They've been very responsive on answering my emails, phone calls, as well as meeting with me in a timely fashion. I've taken the time to read your comprehensive plan that's existing today. I've also looked at your meeting notes from the June 21st City Council Strategic Vision Retreat, and your notes from the September 15th meeting, and your notes that you just approved. After reading the information, I also took the time to walk the property through what you were calling Victory North Residential. I walked from Oakmore Drive, Oak, to I got to where you have the Legacy Boulevard. I turned, went into, went all the way down to Bayside, which is the folks home at the end, and also walked from there to back to Oakmore. What you will find is that all the drainage, or the smallest part where the drainage is the worst, is right behind Oakmore Drive. Because of this, I kinda disagree with a couple of things that I'd like to bring up now. Where you had the information related to Oakmore Drive, as well as, I will take and read it, any, the one that I would like to see is say the following. Any traffic into R1 zone properties Victory or the Big Woods North for by-right development in accordance with all zoning district regulations should be off Yorktown Road, and should be focused on areas where existing drainage is available or can be acquired for a new street. Any existing or future streets used to send traffic to Yorktown Road must require a traffic impact analysis to review. If you look at the coding or the writing that you said there, and your proposal, it almost is like Oakmore doesn't have to have that traffic analysis, even though I know you want to have that traffic analysis done. The second thing that I would like to see is adding of a collector's street, and where that legacy, where that street would begin would be Legacy Boulevard, it would look something like Running Man, which would carry it all the way to Yorktown Road. If this street is part of that solution, what it does is provide the capability of having side streets for your general purpose. Let's see, you call it commercial, as well as any residential areas that do not have, they're landlocked and don't have an access to either Victory Boulevard or to Yorktown Road. Thank you for the time for speaking, and I hope that some of this information will help you, and you'll take and look at it very closely. Thanks again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Hogg.
Hello? All right, I have it on my phone. So I'm going to read from a statement that I have here, and it's about the rezoning just in general. So, good evening, City Council members. My name is Andrea Hogg. My family line has lived here in PCOsen for generations. My great-grandmother, Frances Evans, owned a small grocery store called Evans Grocery in the 1970s at the White House at the corner of PCOsen Avenue and Trinity Street. My grandparents, Janet Hogg and Robert Hogg, lived here their whole life. They graduated from the middle school when it was also the high school. Their son, my dad, was also raised here and went through all of the schools. He graduated from high school to join the army to be a trumpet player. My aunt grew up here her whole life and still lives here to this day. My dad returned to PCOsen with my mom, my sisters, and I in the mid-'90s when he joined the police force. We rented a house off of Ridge Road next to the people with all the nautical decorations in the front yard. That house still has some of it, actually. Special circumstances made our family move around a bit more, meaning that I was only able to attend two years at the primary school, and then my 10th grade year of high school, when we finally returned permanently in 2009. That enabled my sisters to graduate from the high school in 2011. My first job was at Victor Steakhouse while I was attending college at Thomas Nelson, and then transferred to Christopher Newport. Whenever I had been in an accident, Fridays on the corner of Yorktown Road and Victory always fixed my car. My grandparents always took their car to McPherson's because my grandpa was friends with the owner. PCOsen auto repair is somehow related to me as well. My dad would have to remind me of the relation. PCOsen is my home, my family, my heritage. While I understand that things may change with time, I'm also here to say, please stop, I'm tired of seeing so much of the natural land destroyed for houses. Sometimes I feel like it is the Oprah meme, where instead of saying, you get a car, and you get a car, it feels like you get houses, and you get houses, and you get rezoned, so we can put houses there too. There's at least three active developments happening right now. Valmore, Robert Bruce, North Lawson, and how many have there been in the last five years? 10 years. Legacy would be included in that timeline, and we know how massive that is. We all love the small-town appeal, but seem to contradict this statement by destroying that appeal with constant development. If we truly love all aspects of the city, such as the culture and the community, the way it is, then why exactly are we developing? What exactly are we developing? So I'm sure you all are tired of my motion appeal, and want me to get to some facts by now, so I will. At the last meeting, concerns regarding schools were brought to the floor to the council to discuss. The sentiment of the city planner were that he, quote, personally does not see a concern for school capacity. He also shared information that the school division is about 250 students less than it was at its peak in 2008 and 2009. it was at its peak in 2008 and 2009. While this may be true, it is clear the concerns of the public were lost in translation. Allow me to attempt to articulate these concerns more clearly. The main concern amongst families and residents is our schools being overcrowded. Overcrowded doesn't have to mean max-capacity size for fire hazard reasons, but also in terms of classroom size. I'll use my daughter's experience for this example. She started 3rd grade this year with a classroom size of 24 students. The VDOE provides guidance of classroom size, and for 3rd grade class, the recommendation is: Assigned licensed instructional personnel in a manner that produces division-wide ratios of students and average daily membership to full-time equivalent teaching positions that are not greater than the following ratios: 24 to 1. Remember, her class started the year with 24 students. Now imagine the other 3rd grade classes. The smallest class she has been in since starting school is 22 students. So maybe the size isn't a problem in and of itself, since it's technically following the VDOE guidelines. But has anyone looked at discipline data? The VDOE has reports on that, too. These are called the Virginia School Quality Profiles, and you can access reports for the school district as a whole or individual schools. Pecosin City Schools has an enrollment of 2,070 students for the 2023-2024 school year. During that year, there were 416 incidents of behavior of a safety concern across all schools. With other reporting categories, the total number of reported behavioral events makes 1,250 reports across all schools. We only have four, with 270 students. Not to mention the increase of in-school suspensions. The year 2021 to 2022 has 118. 2023, no, excuse me, 2022 to 2023 has 196. 2023 to 2024 had 251 in-school suspensions. This year, or, excuse me, last year's data is not yet available on the website. Secondly, concerns about traffic on Victory were brought to the record. The council's response was that the VDOE is responsible for that road. The city does not own the roadway. The council acknowledged that traffic on Victory is bad. So, if the VDOE is not cooperative, as you all would like, is the plan to make traffic on Victory so bad that VDOE, not VDOE, VDOT can't ignore it anymore? Third, the council made comments about wanting to hear more input from the community regarding this rezoning. You referenced potential surveys, very low attendance at council meetings, and perhaps not having meetings at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesdays. A council member mentioned that the person who manages the Facebook page for the city is doing a great job. There was a post on September 9th about the meeting on 15th, so about a week before the actual meeting, but no reminder on the day of the post. I bring that up because the speaker at that meeting on the 15th said he only was able to come because he saw a post that day, which means did not come from the city page. For the record, there is no post on the official Facebook page for this meeting before I came here. And then, secondly, wouldn't it even on the LED sign that we have on Victory? You don't need to do anything fancy to know how people feel. They talk about the wetlands, the schools, the traffic, to really say they just don't want development. You can continue to try to brush off the comments people make on Facebook as misinformation, and therefore invalidate the feedback, but it doesn't change that people don't want development. I say all of this to really ask, what is Pecosin? If we say it is for good schools, then does the yearly rise in behavior and safety incidents keep it that way? If we say it is for Pecosin families, then does building $600,000 homes keep it that way? And most importantly, if we say it is a small town, then does developing every inch of the town keep it that way? Thank you.
Ms. Haug?
Yes?
Ms. Haug, can we get your address, please?
I have.
For the record?
I have.
You got it? Okay.
And I have Randy Neal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think I can keep it short, because actually, a lot of the thoughts have already been expressed, both in the previous meeting and with this fine lady. She also echoes your citizen survey of 2017, which I'm sure you probably looked at. What I'd be looking at is, you know, I understand you're a planning commission. Development is something you have to plan for. I know in your own documents, it says controlled development. So I can't say no development, but I could say, please, control development, or delay I think with what you inherited through legacy, you should have enough taxes. I would say with what you inherited through legacy, I'm hearing that there are increased calls to that area, maybe criminal, you know, and I'm also hearing that the elementary schools might be a little more robust in terms of population. If that is true, then as that, that wave moves through, your high schools will be overcrowded eventually. One of the things about Pecosin that everyone wants is your incredible education system. We don't want to get rid of that. The other is the sense of community, which we definitely don't want to get rid of. I'm keeping it short because I think, really, Mr. Quinn has a reasonable solution for you all. I hope you genuinely look at what he's asked. I'm also keeping it short so that it's just specific messages. Why develop now? Why don't we delay? In terms of the document, I would ask, please, you know, look at Harold Quinn's inputs there. I think that that's a reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone that I have that filled out a speaker card. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the audience for visitors. We're going to move on to item E during staff presentations. Mr. Cannella and Mr. Horton.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to be, again, mindful of your time this evening. You've seen much of the start of this presentation a few times, but for the benefit of the folks here and the folks at home, I'll go through it. This is the current zoning map for the city of Pecosin. It's every parcel in the entire city, but we'll zero in on what we're discussing as part of tonight's conversation. It's this, the north side of Victory Boulevard, but not every zoning district, just the three I've outlined here. The R1 single-family residence, the research and development district, and the general commercial district. This is the area of focus. It's 210 acres, 39 parcels, and you can see the breakdown there, district-specific. And then some context from the Legacy Development on the side side of Victory Boulevard. This is the Research and Development District in blue. This is the language referenced in the comprehensive plan currently and being discussed to amend. These are the permitted uses and prohibited uses in the Research and Development District as the code currently exists. I think it's important to note that no part of this discussion is a rezoning or even necessarily a contemplated rezoning at this time. It's all comprehensive plan-specific.
Pause on that slide just a moment.
Sure.
And just to clarify, this is permitted uses as it stands right now in the research and development, as it's zoned right now?
This will remain unchanged as part of this conversation and this process. This is the city code. This is the regulatory code, the legal code of which we follow. Tonight's discussion and the discussion at large is the comprehensive plan. We're not, you all are not changing the base or underlying zoning of any parcel. You're not permitting any use that's not currently permitted, or you're not permitting one that's currently prohibited. It's just a modification of the language as found in the comprehensive plan. This is the general commercial district. This includes some EDA parcels, and this is the existing language that tonight's amendments that Mr. Horton will get to basically contemplates the general commercial being carried through the Research and Development District in the comprehensive plan and perhaps the future land use map only. That doesn't mean that the underlying zoning is changing. It just puts it in the comprehensive plan through 2038. This is a list of the permitted uses in the general commercial district. That code actually continues to, some specific prohibited uses on the EDA parcels, which more or less specifically prohibits on the Economic Development Authority-owned parcels only, single-family, multifamily living, as well as those parcels specifically being developed in pieces. This is the language, permitted uses in the B2 district. The B2 district, of course, found primarily on With Creek Road, but some of this language, of course, is mentioned as part of the general commercial language. The same is true for the B1 office professional district language. At this slide, you will see the existing R1 single-family residential parcels on the north side of Victory Boulevard. I think it is worth mentioning that a number of those parcels do currently have access from Yorktown Road, and you can imagine how they may be interconnected from them. But those are existing connections. Those are existing public streets. Like I told you all at your last meeting, these connections and then the development thereof of these properties has been at least contemplated since 1984, when Oakmore was developed. The two adjacent parcels that Oakmore and Abbott Lane basically terminate at, it says on the record plate, it says future development. Obviously, that hasn't happened. And again, nothing you are doing tonight, or as part of this process, is making it more permissive or less restrictive for development in the R1 single-family district. This is the central planning district language. That's where the R1 single-family district is mentioned in the comprehensive plan as it exists. The permitted uses are listed there. They're true of basically all of the single-family residential districts in the city. And Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is where the portion of my presentation ends. This is the current future land use map that shows you that portion of the north of Victory that we're discussing, and that in yellow being the low-density residential, the light blue, research and development, and then, of course, in the purple, the general commercial. I think it's also important to note, hearing some concerns that have been addressed. Nothing you all are doing as part of tonight's discussion or moving forward at this time contemplates permitting any sort of multifamily or high-density residential on any of these parcels. It's not part of the discussion, and that is not permitted anywhere on the north of Victory in the R1 district, the RND district, or the general commercial. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. And if not, I'll take a seat, and Mr. Horton will take us the rest of the way.
I'm doing my magic mic here. This is the future land use map of the city pursuant to the 2018-2038 comprehensive plan. The area that we're looking at is focused, if I can get my pointer to work, in the area here, general commercial, research and development, and low-density residential. Get kind of a blow up of that map here. Again, general commercial, research and development, and low-density residential. Okay, so we'll take it in sections. Pursuant to the Planning Commission's direction at the last meeting, we did decide to go with Big Woods North Residential and Commercial. But this is sort of a general overview of the whole area. As Mr. Cannella pointed out, I think earlier in his slides, it is 210 acres of mostly undeveloped property, most of which is in disparate private ownership. To be fair, there are some properties that are held ultimately by the same people. Parcels do have the ability to be serviced by public utilities, but road access to larger parcels in the rear, zoned R1, those right there, are somewhat restricted by the fact that you've got this commercial property up front, whether it's research, development, or general commercial. So, the creation of new public streets may be necessary to provide access, whether it's access within the commercial or possibly access beyond that into the R1 areas in the rear. Typically, the R1, or the commercial, I'm sorry, has been marketed for mixed use, which is no longer available in the zoning ordinance, been eliminated, no more mixed use, which created legacy, by the way. So it's no more mixed use, but it's also been marketed for light commercial, office uses in the research, development, and retail and commercial uses in the general commercial area, which is, again, the purple, research, development's in the blue. Okay, so as we move forward, this is basically a rehash of what I already said. So is that. The plan does contemplate the elimination of the blue-colored research and development district in order to allow the general commercial to run pretty much to the York County line. I think Mr. Cannella summed that up earlier, but I just wanted to restate it. And that is really the only big change that we're making as part of this comprehensive plan, proposed rewrite, anyway, I will say. Okay, so if we go into the Big Woods East, which, again, is the general commercial zoned area, and I'm going to keep flipping back to this map to make sure everybody knows where we are. General commercial, this was called Big Woods West formerly. It's now called Big Woods North Commercial, or it's supposed to be, anyway. I finally got another slide that I wanted. General commercial, again, is proposed to go all the way to the York County line, to be designated for general commercial use. Allows for similar uses to B1 and B2, albeit with a few more conditional use provisions in there. Higher architectural and shared infrastructure standards are also part of the general commercial district. Proposed development in Big Woods area should be permitted with attention to controlled street access, which is what I was maybe misspoke a little bit in our presentation. But what we're talking about there is streets coming off of Victory Boulevard, going back into the, what will become, if this is passed, entirely general commercial designation. It's not a rezoning, it's just a designation in the comprehensive plan, and perhaps back to the R1 properties, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Big Woods East, principles of better design, enhanced landscaping, and green areas, which is required by our ordinance now pursuant to the... is required by our ordinance now pursuant to the amendments back last November. Big Woods East, a lot about the Big Woods East here. Oh, I'm going backwards. It might be a while. Big Woods West is promoted, is proposed for elimination. It's going to be part of the Big Woods North commercial area, and again, the plan envisages the elimination of the research and development district in favor of general commercial. Shouldn't say zoning there because we're not rezoning anything. These properties are noted as Big Wood North Commercial. Okay, Big Woods North Residential, which is, again, this area up here. Several recommendations, I know Mr. Quinn talked earlier, but it is the base zoning layer of the Big Woods residential area, 20,000 square foot lots, 100 feet of road frontage, or 50 square meters of public street for access. It's the largest area of R1 land in Pocohontin in this district, and it's within the big woods, which are pretty big. As discussed in the general conversation about Big Woods North, creation of new public streets may be necessary to access and develop these parcels, some of which, and I'm going to go back again, but some of which contain non-tight dwellings, although we don't know the exact extent, flood plain, and will, of course, require stormwater management facilities, which I think is, you know, serves as a bit of a dampener in terms of any density. Of course, it's, you know, it's R1. It's fairly low-density, anyway, but that's a further dampening of that. Yes, apparently my pocket lapel is not working as well as I would have hoped, but anyway, I will speak into the mic, or try to, anyway. Anyway, what I was seeing is there are a number of environmental factors in R1 that work against it being developed. Oakmore Road, as you see coming down from here, that is one such area where the environmental problems have been rather large, which evidenced by the fact that nothing's happened since, I think, Mr. Canelo, or somebody mentioned 1984, so it's been a while. Certainly, certainly since I've been here in 2017, there hadn't been anything. We've had several people look at the files, but they have declined to really pick up the mantle and go from there. Our, new public streets might be necessary to provide access, although we would prefer at this point that if there are existing accesses off of Yorktown and Oakmore, that they be used. Now, Mr. Quinn earlier tonight mentioned the similar language but omitting Oakmore Road, so I throw that out there for the planning commission's consideration. If there is not, if the properties are landlocked or where no access exists or can be created, access via a public street off Victory Road should, remember, this is the comp plan, so it's all should here, be in the ownership of the developer at the time of application, be limited to the public street, be focused towards existing intersections, those being City Hall Avenue, Legacy Boulevard, and Big Woods Drive, and require traffic impact analysis for review. Now, the importance of a traffic impact analysis is not to get the developer to pay for public improvements on the road. I want to make that clear. But it would serve as an analysis for review of the overall plan. We know that legacy is not going to be extended past two lanes. We know that Yorktown is the way that it is, Oakmore is the way that it is, and it's probably not going to change anytime soon, certainly not during our terms here, maybe Thomas's, I don't know, but, but... So that's really the extent of what I've got. I will say, though, as far as further steps, as I mentioned in the work session, this is being discussed now in front of the planning commission. If the planning commission wants another meeting, we can have another meeting. Otherwise, this will go to a joint work session between the planning commission and the city council, and from there, we'll go to public hearings before the planning commission and a public hearing before the city council, who will make the final determination. So, you know, that's what I've got for now. I'll be happy to take in questions.
Questions? So I would like to get the planning commission's input on where we go from here, how we direct staff in moving forward with this, or how you would like to proceed, just so Crystal and staff can capture this properly. Want to make sure we just work down here, make sure everybody has a fair turn. But this time, I'm going to start down here, because I always start down there, so, Mr. Jaeger.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank those that spoke tonight and everybody that's here in attendance. I think it's great that you're part of this process and involved, and as we've said, more feedback is important from the members of our city. As far as moving forward, I personally feel like we're kind of at a place where, you know, going, meeting with the city council, joint session, I'm feeling that that's kind of where we should go.
I'd also like to thank everyone who spoke tonight, and good to see so many people in the seats in here, hearing your input, so thank you for that. I agree with Commissioner Jaeger that I feel like the language is in a good place. I think there might be some tweaks we need to make, but I feel like that can be done in a joint session with city council.
Yes, I'd like to also thank everyone for coming out tonight. I wanted to reiterate, I don't, it's not, so everyone knows, it's not the commission's responsibility to rewrite zoning ordinances or site plan. We're here tonight to look at modifying the comprehensive plan as presented there, so, and I would like to move that we continue the session with the city council regarding this, changes to the comprehensive plan as presented.
I concur with what all of you have said. I mean, we've talked about it enough over the last couple of months in this time to move forward, and also thank you to everyone for coming out. It means a lot, seriously, and we, you know, I think we have a lot of the same concerns, and we all moved to Pocohontin for a reason, you know, we love it because of what it is, so, thank you.
I am also in concurrence. I grew up here. I went to the schools and everything of that nature, so I understand that, and I want to tell you how grateful we are to have you come out tonight. It takes time on a Monday night to come out and spend it with us, with so many other pressing things in our community going on, so I want to thank you. I do agree it's time to move forward with the city council. It's always good to hear what the ideas were. I know that we really gained a lot in our June retreat with them, and so I look forward to that, and hopefully that will give staff direction on how to proceed forward.
Next, we are going to move on this evening to item number F on our agenda, communications and correspondence from staff. Mr. Horton?
I don't really have anything except to thank everybody who came out today and thank you, and of course, we're only halfway through, so.
Mr. Canelo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start the discussions with the city manager's office tomorrow about moving this work session forward to have with city council. I'm looking at a December 8 date, and depending on if that'll work for you all and, of course, city council's agenda, that may be preliminary and maybe too soon, so it may get kicked to January, but we'll start work tomorrow on making that an agenda item for an upcoming city council meeting. If that happens on December 8, I will certainly be with you, but as you know, we don't have planning commission meetings in November, and I don't believe we'll have one in December other than that, so this is likely my last night with you all.
It has been a good, good ride, almost, well, about four and a half years, I guess, while they's had to put up with me, but I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and former Chairwoman Schreiber, and all the members of the planning commission that I've had an opportunity to work with in that amount of time, and thank publicly Mr. Horton for taking a chance on hiring me in 2021. I've enjoyed every minute of it, and I'll miss being here and you all allowing me to serve you, so, anyway, I can be helpful to you until January 2. Give me a call. Anyway, I can be helpful to you after. Give me a call. It's just going to be a little bit of a different job, but anyways, just want to extend my appreciation to you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning commission, past and present.
With that announcement, I would just like to say, Thomas, you've been great to work with my short tenure, and we wish you the best of luck moving forward, but the city in my eyes is blessed to have you. We appreciate your leadership and service, so, congratulations.
I would also like to echo that sentiment and say that Thomas has always been, frequently been, my first phone call when I had a question or a text or whatever, and he always responds right back and gives me what I need, so thankful that you've always been there, thankful for everything you've done for the city, and I wish you luck in your new endeavors.
Thomas, I'm going to miss working with you and wish you the best moving forward, so.
Thanks for everything, you know, you've been a big part of the, you know, I know you grew up here and all that, and city council, and you've always served the city, basically your whole life, continue to do so, and, you know, it really means a lot to me what you've helped me out with and everything here, and forward to, you know, the great things you're going to do in the future, so thank you.
I'm going to say this and try not to cry a little bit. Um, I know. It has been an absolute joy to work with you. You are one of the first people that I can call or text or meet with, and I am grateful for your support, and, you know, I wish you nothing but the best. You are a consummate professional, and the city is lucky to have you, and we were lucky to serve with you. Thank you for your service. While seeing no other business tonight, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Do you have a second?
Second that.
For posterity. Commissioner Armentron?
Aye.
Commissioner Hurt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Aye.
Chairman Shot?
Aye.
We're adjourned.